Okay, we're good to go.
All right, this meeting will come to order. This is Erda City Council. And we are, this is Thursday, December 8th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We're in the Twilla County Auditorium, located at 47th Street, South Main Street, Twilla, Utah. This meeting is on Google Meets and also broadcasts on YouTube. We're going to excuse Scott Durbain tonight, Craig Smith.
Here.
Jess Burns here, Cal Martin.
Mayor.
And Terry.
Here. John won't be here anymore.
Yeah, we'll also excuse John. He's not even gonna phone in tonight. We're on our own. All right, I think it's probably my turn to do the pledge. For me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, start off the meeting with public comment. Nobody jumping out of their seats here? Anybody online?
There are no hands raised online.
So when do you normally make the fire report or commute?
You are...
Number seven.
Okay, you're over seven, but coming up so quick. I haven't seen it. I didn't see it on the market. So I just wanna make sure that wasn't...
You're gonna be on the agenda every first meeting of the month.
Okay.
Seeing none, I move with closed public comment.
Second.
Then move in second, we close public comment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Be opposed? Okay, public comments now. Comments or corrections on meeting minutes from November 10th and November 29th?
Move we approve the meeting minutes from November 10th and November 29th.
Second. Moving second, we approve these minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have a sheriff's report. We don't have a sheriff here. They've been busy today.
We haven't had one in the last two months.
Yeah, a little bit. Mr. Nunn, it's your turn.
If I'm standing up here, does this mic catch everything?
It does.
Okay. Typically, from what I understand, you've had Buck Peck here giving this report. He has encouraged me numerous times to come here, and I always miss the meeting because it's not on my calendar. And so he reminded me tonight, and so I decided it would be a good idea for me to come. In Erda, in the month of November, had eighteen calls, which are up ten from last month, including two fires, one of which, one fire was on Campbell Road, and I was present for that. And it was more of a scare than anything, burn stuff in the oven, which is always good from our perspective. It's like, take care of something simple. Two high school football games, two elementary preschool field trips. We had a training at our department, which was for the entire region, basically. And then upcoming, we've, on December 17th, we have where we'll be driving Santa through the community. So that'll include Erda, and we'll, in the next week, we're gonna publish maps and things like that, and give estimates for times and stuff. So, any questions?
You'd be throwing candy when you drive Santa.
Do I wanna what?
You'd be throwing candy when you drive Santa. I'll just bring my kids.
Well, we have leftover saltwater taffy from July 4th. That'd be nice and...
If you don't use it now, you'll have, you can use it next year.
That's right, that's right. We'll just keep it there. Just gonna break it too.
Cars need it for traffic.
Our expectation is we will have candy canes. So we will be trying to do some of that. And is there anything you would like me to include in this report other than that type of, those types of details?
I think that's perfect.
Okay. And if there's nothing else, that's it for us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have Yessenia Valenzuela? I got an email from her recently asking...
I'm wondering if she's stuck in the traffic.
Okay. I did spend forty-five minutes in traffic.
No kidding?
To get between Stansbury.
Okay, well, if she comes in, we'll just move her along.
Do you want me to, I can go over the thing she's gonna talk about?
Yeah.
Because you're talking about traffic on Church, or Erda Way, right?
Yeah, the Excelsior.
How are ya? Joe White. So, one of the things we've been working diligently with Excelsior is to clear up Erda Way traffic, to get it off so that there's no queuing there. So we've came up with a solution. We're going to build a road on the east side of, I think it's the middle school, which is the far east side, and it's gonna go from there thirteen hundred feet into the property. We're building the high school. They're gonna build a high school on seventeen acres behind where the school exists. So we'll have, and this is gonna start in January. We have the plans drawn. We're waiting for Erda City to approve the engineering drawings through Jake, and then we gotta get an encroachment permit and some things, but the queuing will go off Erda Way up that road now, and they're gonna build two travel lanes between the two schools to take, and that should alleviate all of the congestion morning and afternoon off of Erda Way.
So it'll be three or four lanes wide, queuing lanes.
The road will be a normal public right-of-way road, like a sixty-foot width, and they can do it, but I imagine they have enough to queue two roads behind their school. We're giving them enough property that they can do two travel lanes and then queue up and down the road and filter it that way. So it's the exact same length as in front of their school now, and plus their queuing. So we figure that their traffic study says it should be enough to get all the traffic off of Erda Way and not even queue at the church anymore either. Everything should be off Liddell, so that can be traveled. So I'm sure they'll go up one side, come down the other, and then pick up kids. But we see it's a problem, and we wanna alleviate it and help. So that's, I think that's what she was coming to talk about tonight. So that's, that construction I said should start in January, finish somewhere when we can pave, but probably won't be till April or May when the weather, we have to have fifty degrees and rising to get pavement in, but sometime April, May-ish, right towards the end of school. But there's, we're working on a solution. As part of that, we've talked about moving, so Tilby Village has eighty-three units that's been approved, the density there. And one of the things, and this is just, this isn't, this is just for your information to give me some feedback, but we have the school is gonna take eighteen acres, and we're gonna transfer density to Erda Estates over and leave, we'd like to leave ten acres right by the schools open for Erda City Cemetery. So that you have, it's open space by the schools and kinda make it a nice Central Park area type thing, but put the cemetery there that I think will be beneficial for Erda too. So if you have feedback, I'd love to hear it, or if it's something you don't mind us pursuing, we'd love to have your comments.
Personally, never thought about a cemetery.
The city being charged managing it?
Eventually, they would, yeah, they would have to take care, they would take it over after it was donated. But my intent would be to develop it in little things at a time and donate it to the city. You're not gonna need all ten acres at once. We'll set it aside and develop it as we need it. Like Stansbury has, their cemetery is only three acres, you know, but I think, for me, we plan now to, you know, so we don't have to find something in the future. But, I mean, I imagine something that eventually maybe some of them wanna be buried in Erda.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of lifelong Erda residents that would love that option, you know?
So I've been a cemetery, like cemeteries, it's a weird, I wouldn't say phobia or a weird thing, but I love them. So, anyway, be kinda cool to have. Anyway, if you have any, don't have any questions, that's my update.
What kind of fencing are you thinking? Do you know how kids...
On the cemetery? Oh, I don't know. I haven't even thought of it. They have, I like the black iron rod, but the new that Twilla just put in, I think it looks sharp, and it keeps it, I mean, I don't know how...
Lasts a long time.
I like the way that looks. So, something like that, but we'd develop it, you know, I think if we plant trees and be proactive in ten years from now, you know, it would, it could be something pretty cool.
So you don't think we'll need a requirement for like the yellow school zone lights by charter school?
I don't know, I have no idea what they need there. I think a traffic signal is always probably welcome. I don't know why they don't put one in. Maybe that's something we need to work with them on, just to, you know...
The kids aren't walking across the street.
Yeah, not usually.
More to slow people down from going through that area.
But if there's no kids in that front area anymore.
Cars coming in and out instead.
Nowadays, I mean, now you have to go slow by nature. No, you can't go faster there anyway, but, I don't, I mean, she can, Ms. Valenzuela can speak to that, with their plan on the actual Erda Way. Our goal is just to get the cars off as much as possible.
I know she mentioned that in one of her letter emails.
So, anyway, that's the, and hopefully if she comes, she can tell you the same thing, because that's what we talked about.
Appreciate it.
All right, yep, thank you.
All right, Sean.
All right. Thank you guys for taking the opportunity to let me come out. Due to the inclement weather, I apologize, but we had a physical demo that we were planning to provide, and has been on its way since November 18th now, but got lost somewhere along the way. So, we don't have our demo kit, so I'm gonna just go through some options and...
They have some really good pictures for you.
Got some pictures for ya, yep. We'll switch on BGA. Nice, look at that. We're up. Okay, so just gonna go over a few different things. So obviously, none of you guys have met me or my company GenCom before, but I'm gonna go into a little bit of difference of who we are and why you would want to work with us, and then go into some of the council chambers technology, and the recommended solution, and some of those costs. Again, anywhere along the way, feel free to stop me. I'm happy to, happy to answer questions along the way. So, we work with a lot of cities here in Utah. Threw some of them on here for you to just give pointer references, but we've been in business for sixty-five years. And while we have an entire vertical focused on municipalities here in Utah, we also do federal courts. We're one of four in the nation that can work on those. We also have a federal BPA for Capitol Hill, so we do work in the Senate and House of Representatives and big boys up in DC. And we do the DOD and other Hill Air Force Base kind of contracts, and then we have a whole K through twelve and and vertical that's focused on corporate. So, we kinda get our hands in almost everything. But with our focus on cities, this vertical is extremely important to us because it keeps our technicians home, right? We are very invested in Utah and invested in making sure that we improve our communities. So, some of the things that set us apart are the fact that we have degreed engineers. I'm an electrical engineer. I, you know, got, went through and got that degree and also get to use that in all of our designs. So everything that we do is not just thrown together, it's engineered. We have certified technicians, and for, one of the great things for us here is we are on state contract. So procurement and purchasing is very easy because we can just use that pretty much blanket purchase and just say, we can, it's already agreed upon, this is the price, pass it through, right? So, makes it extremely easy for us to tailor solutions to meet the exact needs of our customers. All right, so we're gonna dive into some of the council chambers technology now. When we normally design one, it would be designed around a council chambers, right? So, in this situation where it's a little different because it's mostly portable, right? Or it needs to be able to be removed each time. These can be recording systems, DSPs, microphones, speakers, able to connect with Zoom and YouTube, cameras, control systems, timers, video distribution, screens, ADA compliance, controllers, window processors, all the fun stuff that make the council chambers easy to use, right? So, we're kinda diving into some of these aspects and how we can make them easy for you guys to be able to use your system, but also scale it. So that if, you know, a year, two years, four years from now, you get your own building, you don't have to just trash everything. You can, you know, install it, use it, and have it be worthwhile to last ten years. So, to give an idea of one of, some of the systems, we demo systems all across the state in different venues and things. It's actually where we met Jennifer, and she was able to, you know, come by one of our booths with one of our partners who is Telvec. Now, the demo I was going to bring in would show some of these microphones. I put together a price of, you know, if I were to put one of those systems together, and I think it's a little outside of the scope of what we're doing here. So, I'm gonna try and just scale it back a little bit so that we can talk about individual pieces, and then we can talk about the, how we can put those into perspective. So, for your, for your council here, we're gonna go into audio, and the audio was mainly gonna be microphones, speakers, and then that recording system that would tie into any potential Zoom or YouTube information that we wanna send to. Then we'll have the video side of it. Again, you have a projector here. This would be a, an upgrade to that being your own system as well, being able to incorporate these same signals wirelessly, making it easy for you to integrate each time.
First, none of this stuff is ours.
Correct, yeah. And I listed as Zoom, it would work just exactly the same as Google Meets. So, whatever software you wanna use, if you wanna use Zoom today, Teams tomorrow, Google Meet the next day, it's all gonna be the same, but the peripherals to be able to communicate that information to it. The YouTube streaming portion of it, rather than getting just a screenshot of everything that you're sending or seeing on Google Meets, sending that to Zoom, we can make it look more presentational, more professional, adding in different windowing options. And then lastly, the cameras to be able to give it that look and feel that we're talking about. So, this is what we're gonna be talking about. So, first thing on the list is the audio. So this is one of Telvec's entry-level lines, but it's, just because it's entry doesn't mean that it's not sophisticated and good. It is called their discernal line, and what's really cool about these systems is they're fully scalable. You can scale up to fifty different units, but it gives the chairman the ability to run this, run the meeting. Every person has their own microphone. They have their own speaker attached to it. And it, the little box on the left here has the control processor on it. So, it has the ability to do the built-in recording directly. So, everything that happens in here is automatically recorded, has another, has two thumb drives. You can even do it redundant if you want to. But it's, it's a simple way to get a digital signal processed signal that you can then use to record as well as to stream or to use on Zoom or any of those. We would also like to attach a little speaker onto it, even though it's a small room and, you know, you're using it right here, giving it a little bit of amplification doesn't hurt, right? So, a little speaker in the corner so that everyone can clearly hear whatever anyone says. Terry doesn't speak very loud. So, you know, gives everyone the chance to hear what he says. Part of that is we include the road case for it all so that it can easily package up and roll out without needing to be disassembled every time. So, a simple solution to throw it all together.
What's the price?
I can show you the price. Now, I have all the prices at the end, but I can jump to it if you want me to. Let me jump to it. I'll jump. I'll jump. Okay, that audio system there is eight thousand two forty-two. That includes all those microphones that we just talked about there. So that's nine microphones, which would include the seven that we would need for planning commission, as well as one for the clerk and one for the podium. Any other questions on how that works or what would be involved with that?
If we were to get, say, a microphone, put it right here, me and Terry talking, could that microphone pick us both up well enough? Or you gotta have them right here?
So, you could, and that's actually one of the, so this particular system doesn't do the split like the upgraded model is, but by that point, when you go to the upgraded one, it can do two people, but it really, you're jumping those costs significantly. Instead of, you know, a five hundred, six hundred dollar microphone, you're jumping to a twenty-five hundred dollar microphone, right? So it's, it's, it's a big jump.
That might be less than ten thousand, right?
Correct. Yeah. Yep. Yep. But if you wanted to, yes, I, that actually, you could. Two people could still share one of these. You'd just both be kinda, you know, leaning in on it, yeah.
Might be a good option just starting now, trying to cut prices a little bit while our budget's kinda tight.
That is an option. All right, so we'll jump into the video side of it. So this is a portable screen with a portable projector. Portable in the sense that it has a stand associated with it that has wireless built in. So that means that anyone that's either presenting from up here or the clerk can present any of the agenda items. But just simple keystrokes, you don't have to install anything. It's very easy to use, and it will beam it right up so that you don't have to dangle the wires all over. Makes it really effective, and we found a lot of success with it. It doesn't need to rely on the internet or any wifi in the room. It's just, it can interact with any computer that's basically within the last five years. So if it's a Mac, Windows, any of them work with it. So, it also has its own road case and travel case for the screen. Any questions on that? That's a hundred-inch screen, by the way, so to give you perspective, that's probably another two feet onto what we're looking at right now. Diagonally. Okay. Then for the Zoom integration here, and when I say Zoom again, I mean, I should call it conferencing integration. This is a box that ties into the control system on the audio processor, so it allows us to pull audio in and out of that and into the computer. So you can use that for being able to hear people remotely, and it would then play through any of your speakers at your desks on your mics, and it would also play through the microphone or the speaker of the, in the room. And then that would also be translated to any of the recordings as well. And again, it has a, the road case for that. So this is a setup that we do commonly for our city councils. It's called a window processor, but it's got, this one that we've chosen here is really cool because it's got a bunch of different things packed into one box. So, it's a window processor that can also do encoding as well as camera controlling. So, when we call it window processor, we mean that you can pull different windows or different video images all into the same screen. So on YouTube, you know, this is what they then see, right? They see the camera one and camera two both showing at the same time, or you can switch that to camera one and presentation. Or, you know, you can play with the picture-in-picture side-by-side, put backgrounds on it, make it very professional look, but simply just by touching on the screen exactly what preset you want. So, easy to use and very effective. And being able to stream to YouTube, this takes it off of the processing of the computer and gives you a full, full digital, I should say, full resolution image that's not burdening the computers processing to be able to send to YouTube as well. So, it looks better and sounds better as well. The camera controller side of this makes it really easy because then you can set presets, and you can trigger those presets or layouts by simple touches of the buttons so that if there is a need to switch it from a wide angle of the council to a more focused on a single person, that's just a single touch of the button to give that camera switching. And then the last portion to this is the cameras. And we have two cameras planned with small network switch, their own road case, and they are pan tilt zoom cameras that can, again, work with the equipment we've talked previously about. So, it's expandable up to four different cameras, but, yeah, keeping it tight right now. Just one for person facing the lectern, one for the council. It's the intent there. And then, something to, important to mention on this is that part of our solution includes all of the, so everything can travel, right? So we'll, we'll engineer it and put it all in so that it's easy to travel the entire system. And then we'll give a breakdown of how to set it up every time, giving a detailed list. And we like to color code everything, so makes it, red cable goes to red port, blue cable goes to blue. You know, just make it very simple and easy to set up each time so that it's always set up correctly. So, overall costs with the solutions. So, like we mentioned, audio is just over eight thousand dollars. That includes, again, all of those nine microphones with the control processor, the active loudspeaker, and the road case. That's that price all included. Then we have the video solution, which is the screen, projector, wireless, road case, and stands. The Zoom or conferencing solution ties into the computer there for one thousand two eighty-five. The YouTube streaming, I call it YouTube, but really it's the window processor, camera controller, and Zoom encoder, or YouTube encoder. And it's important to note that that YouTube encoder has the ability to do up to four different streams at once. So, today you're only on YouTube, but if you wanted to just say, add a live to Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, you could do them all at the same time, just by, you know, and you click one button and they're going. And then lastly is the cameras, right? We have the two cameras with the setup, programming those presets, and adding in the network switch to the road case. So, if you did all of those all together, it'd come to eighteen thousand one eighty-three. So, my, my goal here, again, you can tell me if I missed the mark, but was to keep it under twenty thousand and to give you something that was scalable, reliable, and that would give you enough of the features and functionality that you could, you know, use this for the next five years without really bottlenecking yourselves. So, any questions about any of this?
Being the tech guy, Jess, is there anything in that that we could cut out that we might not need at the moment?
Well, just to start, we probably just do the audiences.
Yeah. Is that the county's camera too, that one, or is that ours?
It is, but it becomes cheap.
Yeah.
It also delivers a cheap product. Whoever's looking on there is seeing us, but they're also seeing the podium, and it just looks like, you know, an eye in the corner. These would, you know, show you, you could actually see the face of the person who's talking, and see us, and different things. Um, these would, you know, show you, you could actually see the face of the person who's talking and see us and different things.
And I think by statute, really, we only need to do the audio. We don't have to have a Zoomer.
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah. Audio recording is the only thing that's, is, um, legally required.
I think as the years go on and ERTA gets more money, this is stuff that they, they can look at when we get a city hall and everything. But I think we keep it as basic as possible at the moment.
Okay. Um, if, if there's, um, any modifications that you'd like to see or any, um, formal. The whole thing? I can do that. If you'd like to see that, we can get there. Um, yeah, yeah. Alright, it won't have the same features or function, but it'll, um, we can do that. Yeah, you, you tell me what you'd like. Again, this is meant to be modular in the sense that, um, each of these options are, something that you can add at any time, right? So it builds upon the base system, which is the audio. Um, audio is, like we all said, like, the only real thing that, um, by law we have to have and you want it to sound good. Um, and so putting a microphone in front of everyone is the best way to do that. I'm happy to, um, provide any additional options as, as needed though, or to scale these options down or modify. So, uh, let me know if you, um, decide on something. Sure. A- and again, I can put it, put together a formal proposal, um, in any form that you'd like. Um, if you'd like me to do it just on the audio, I'd be happy to do that. So what you'd like to see.
Just audio.
So if all you had was the audio, there's, without the encoder, there's no way to, or the, the, the Zoom, there's really no way to broadcast it though, correct?
Um, well, the Zoom portion, it, yeah, it, it's.
We're gonna use the same system we're using today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We use OBS Studio.
Okay. Yeah, so you could keep OBS.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Well, then I'll, uh, I'll put together a proposal at least for the audio.
Just email to us.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Valenzuela.
Hello, um, my name is Yessenia Valenzuela and I'm coming to you guys today as a private citizen. Um, I know, I think originally when I reached out to city council, um, introduced myself as a board member for Excelsior Academy. I am, um, currently on the board. However, we weren't able to get it, uh, voted on, on our last agenda. So I'm here as a private citizen just to engage with all of you and to, um, find out if we can collectively work together to see what is necessary to, uh, propose having ERTA Way, um, have a section for school zone. Um, my children go to those, that school, um, for the last two years. And I think anybody that's been on that stretch of road during, uh, school hours, it can be quite dangerous. And, um, my main concern is that, you know, we don't want to frustrate or aggravate any drivers of the ERTA residents. Um, but again, public safety is number one importance and, and we're talking about children that need to get to school safely. Ideally, I would like to see, um, maybe flashing lights, maybe a crosswalk in time. But, you know, that's all part of development. Right now, I'm just really, um, here to see where our new ERTA city council is at. Um, and the idea and, and, and just collectively work together to see what we need to do to, to get that a safer street, um, during school hours.
So Joe White just kind of was here and presented, uh, uh, a plan whereas, uh, a road was gonna be added behind the school where the cars would queue there, thereby taking at least the foot traffic away from ERTA Way and kind of behind the school and beside the school. Are, are you aware of that?
Yeah, I am aware of that and I understand that it does alleviate some of the congestion that we experience. Um, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Excelsior Academy, but we've gotten pretty creative with the ways that we're trying to minimize, um, the traffic during those hours. I was gonna bring a video, but I thought, I better not, you know, I wait until I got the board behind me because I know that everybody has, um, their two cents that they would like to add. But, uh, the biggest thing is that we just really, i- in the meantime, you know, that, what Joe has proposed and everything that we've been working with him to collectively develop that area is going to help, um, the traffic flow. But ideally, I mean, we really would, really want to work with ERTA City to get it, section of it as a school zone area with the flashing lights where, you know, from, uh, maybe seven forty-five to eight fifteen, that there's those lights that you gotta slow down. That way, there's a lot of issues with, um, ERTA residents and Excelsior parents that will abruptly do illegal U-turns on that street, illegal left-hand turns. And it just creates, it, it's almost just an accident waiting to happen. And I hate to say that, but it, it's, that's the reason why I'm here is that I feel that strongly about it. And I just wanna see, um, if there's any city codes that have been adopted for, um, traffic, uh, safety in those areas or whatever we can use as a mechanism to try to in- increase the public safety on that road. I know there was a conspiracy that I, I heard somewhere on a, uh, on a Facebook post that I think the parents thought that you dot change the timing on the light on SR. And I don't, I don't know if that's true, if they can really change the timing on that light. But I, I just, in the meantime, until we're able to really develop those other plans that we have in progress, I would really wanna see what you guys' thoughts are and what we could work on together for that.
Uh, I would say until a couple of weeks ago, I had probably had more questions concerned, filled in more discussion on the traffic at Excelsior than arguably every other thing combined, uh, in the city. There's a lot of concern there. Uh, yes, we have adopted traffic code. There's, as you said, a lot of people doing illegal U-turns there. We could ask the sheriff to do an enforcement on that. I, it arguably may make traffic worse in the morning when he's doing that, if he had people pulled over also. But we could certainly ask him to do that. The flashing lights in a school zone, the state code says where they can be and what kind of area, how far they can go out. And crosswalks, those are, are very much safety issues. The, and they are to control the speed around a school. But the difference of this school is there's no children on that road or crossing that road. It wouldn't hurt, but I, I don't know exactly that it solves any problems either. We've, we've asked the county to do a study and look at it, to put it, that in there already.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know, I haven't heard back. You heard from Terry, but.
He was up in inner town, decided on that interlocal agreement, whether it was gonna go forward or not. So it might be back on the table.
So they need to be prodded that.
So that, that is something that we're looking at. As a parent there, would asking the sheriff to do a patrol there in the morning to stop illegal left turns and U-turns be of value?
We've, we have noticed more presence of the Twillie County Sheriff and we do appreciate having, um, that there.
We haven't asked him to do actual enforcement there, but we could. Do you, do you think doing an actual enforcement there for a couple mornings and issuing tickets, would that be helpful or counterproductive?
Honestly think that it might be helpful just to do observing. Um, and, but I don't know if that's something that is going hand in hand with the study that's being done.
Sheriff's there and he sees, he, he observes.
A lot.
Something, the law being broken, he has to.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, i- it's, it's up to every individual officer, but likely if there's blatant traffic violations, he'll issue tickets, especially if we ask him to be in that area. And like I say, that's something that we can ask the sheriff to do an active enforcement there. But when he chooses to do it is out of our control, so.
Of course.
Is that something you think would be helpful?
I think it would be helpful in the sense of knowing who's gonna be the violators. Of knowing if it's gonna be the parents or if it's just the people that are rushing to work on that street.
I can tell you it's the parents. I, I farm down there and I watch them come down and they don't wanna sit in the traffic on Liddell Lane. And they don't wanna go around and come across Simron and, and the back way up ERTA Way. They go down, they turn around multiple places and within a quarter mile there. Uh, you can see in the gravel where they sit there and turn around and then go back into Excelsior to make that right-hand turn. Like I say, I can, we can certainly request the sheriff to do a couple of enforcements there, a couple mornings or a couple afternoons. But most likely they would issue some tickets and then maybe even slow traffic down and make it worse on the days that they're doing it because they would have vehicles pulled over there.
My main motivation is public safety. Um, and I, that, I don't know if it would just, if there was a possibility of getting the flashing lights to everybody slow down to twenty miles per hour. I know that that was gonna cause some congestion with the traffic, but that would alleviate the people that are just trying to like fly by on the street too. So I'm, I'm open to whatever suggestions you have.
So I think we gotta get the traffic study done and follow some state laws in order to see if we even can post schools on there, right? So I don't think we can just slap the schools on anywhere we want.
Yeah, we gotta have the traffic study first.
Yeah.
What about slowing the speed limit down?
Is it thirty-five?
We knocked it down to twenty-five. Do you think that would be counterproductive or do you think that would help? I think we probably should do a, a, the overview of our speed limits in ERTA.
Know how mu- how fast they were going over.
Yeah.
Well, and that, and that's the thing, like I, in, in other times of the day, for it to be thirty-five, that's perfectly fine. But it's that those windows that we're trying to get our kids to school safely, you know, that's where I'm saying to, if you have the flashing lights, you have the twenty miles per hour, then everybody is aware that that's what our, our focus is. And so I'm, I'm completely, my, my, my purpose today was originally to just, uh, introduce myself and also to make sure that, um, that, that we wanna work on this collectively. That it's, it's something that has long overdue and, and we're working on it with Joe with the development. Um, but something safer needs to be done during the school year would, would be nice. So, um, do you have any idea on, on that study of when it might be completed so we can return with the board?
Since we just got our interlocal done, we gotta get on the roads department to start on that, so.
When, when you were asking them, Terry, did they say how long it might take?
No, I've gotta call him to Jed now. He's supposed to call me back, so I can ask him some questions.
Would you mind if I just follow up via email and see, uh, when that might be? And then, um, would that study be available to the public?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe get all the parents rounded up if you can, give your guys' opinions and bring them all in here. And all tell us what, tell us what they, what we, what they think we should do.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm planning on doing.
Yep.
Had a couple supporters reach out to me today, but I said, you know what, I gotta wait until the board's behind me, so. Um, yeah, today I'm just here as, as private citizen and just wanna get your feel on that. And if you think that having law enforcement there, I'm not opposed to that. I work with law enforcement every day. So I, I'm not opposed to that. I just wanna make sure that we're encouraging and we're promoting the safety of the kids and ERTA residents. Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Alright, Larson and Company.
Come to Bud.
The exciting stuff.
Get real excited. Usually when it's a crowded meeting and they say the auditors are here, everybody gets up and leaves.
We can't leave.
Alright, I promise I won't make it boring. If you start to get bored, just raise your hand and I'll know that's time to stop. Okay, this is new for all of you.
Yes, it is.
So, uh, I'm not gonna go into a lot of the financials. You guys have looked at the financials, you know where you're at. Um, I'm gonna go over what our responsibilities, what we do in our au- what we do in the audit, what your responsibility is, and then also our opinions. And then there are certain things that I have to communicate to you as a board at the end of, at the end of our audits. Hold over those things. So we're gonna start with the audit report. Um, the first couple paragraphs, that's the opinion on the financial statement, so that's the first opinion that we give. Um, and that, and you can read the paragraphs. I won't, I'm not gonna bore you with the accounting language, but it's an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. That's a clean opinion. Um, I don't know why accountants have to be backwards and we unqualify something if it's good, but I don't know. I never could understand it, but. Um, basically the types of opinions we can give are unmodified, unqualified. Or if there's issues, we either give an adverse opinion, a disclaimer of opinion, or we qualify the opinion. So unmodified or unqualified. Um, in order to come up with our opinion, we follow certain accounting standards and auditing standards. So those are generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards, and there is a difference between those two. Um, there's a difference between a for-profit, public company audit and a government audit, different procedures. We look at different things, um, compliance issues, things like that. Alright, so your responsibilities as far as the audit goes, um, they're, they're, they're always laid out in the engagement letter. But you're responsible for, for the financial statements. They're your financial statements, even though we help prepare them. Um, ultimately Dave reviews them and, and signs off on them. You're also required to know and understand the accounting principles, so things that are happening inside the financial statements, you know, that's your responsibility. Not that we can't be a resource. You guys are a brand new city. You're gonna grow. You're gonna have plenty of growing pains, I promise you. You don't want this to be a growing pain. So if you, if there are questions, reach out to us. I've told Dave and Dave has me on speed dial. I talk to Dave all the time. Um, he's always calling me, asking me questions. So use us, like, even if you call me, well, I have clients that call me once a week, so with questions and, and we're happy to answer. That's, we're not here just to be your auditors. We have to be that resource that you have. You can get answers to your questions. Especially where a lot of people don't want, wanna call the state auditor's office all the time. You can call me if I have to fight with the state auditor's office. I'm happy to do that. In fact, I'd love to do it, so, um, anyway. Alright, so in the audit report as well, we're now required to disclose and, and where this is new, you didn't know anything different before. But in preparing the financial reports, or as Terry's going through, you know, the financials during the year, if there's conditions or events that arise that will prohibit you from continuing as a going concern longer than twelve months, then you have to do an analysis to say, okay, what, we have to identify the events. What are we gonna do to overcome it? Can we overcome it or do we have to circumvent them? And, and are we really gonna be able to continue to operate longer than twelve months? If there's not, then obviously your financial statements get modified, like there's additional disclosures, things like that. You know, it, it, you might find as a new city that there may be some conditions that come up. You know, it may be property tax issues, it may be, you know, zoning issues, things like that, that all of a sudden you lose revenue. That potentially could affect your ability to continue. Um, so you just have to do that analysis. Alright, our responsibility as part of the audit, we have to exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism. Um, like I said, we have a, a good relationship with Dave. We've worked on, with Dave on really small jobs and, and really large jobs like American Samoa. Um, and he knows how we do things. I know how he does things. Um, but we have to keep that relationship. Um, and he knows how we do things, I know how he does things, um, but we have to keep that relationship professional. And he, and he's really good and, and having Dave help you out and be that resources. Um, I'm glad that Dave's helping you guys out. Um, so we have to identify and assess risk, so all of our audits are based on risk, and we'll talk a little bit about risk in a little bit. We have to look at your internal controls, like I said, you're, you're, you're a new city. As you grow, it's critical that you put controls in place. So once again, let us be a resource, I've seen small entities and large entities, I know the controls that need to be in place. Um, happy to come out and do trainings on it, whatever you guys need. Um, but as you grow, that's a critical piece in order to maintain good financial records, just to have good internal controls. Um, and then the last ballpoint is that we also, as part of our audit, we look at conditions or events. That would prohibit you to continue, from continuing as a going concern, so you have to do an analysis. If we identify anything, we also have to do our own internal analysis as part of the audit procedures. Um, and the first thing that we would do is get your analysis, so we incorporate that in order to. All right, the next part of the audit, audit report just outlines different sections, so requires supplementary information. Just remember that there's different parts of the financial statements. So the management's discussion analysis that's, that, that always follows the audit report, but is before the financial statements, that's a good place to read. It, it has a lot of comparative data, um, it's, it's kind of the Reader's Digest version of the financial statement, so if you don't wanna get lost in the weeds of the numbers. Then go to the M D N A, just remember that that section is unaudited. Because we don't do testing over that section of the financial statements, we're more concerned about account balances and disclosures. Um, but Gatsby says that you have to have the M D N A always with your financial statements because of. Its ability to give more readability and understandability to the financial statements, all right. All right, the next report required to issue, uh, just says that we perform our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. Um, this report is pretty standard every year, it hasn't changed for a long time. It just states that we look at your internal controls, we don't give an opinion on your internal controls, but we make sure that, A, you have the ones that are necessary. Um, and B, that they're actually functioning. Um, and, and if we identify anything that's considered a material weakness or a significant deficiency, we have to. Identify those as part of the au- audit reports. Um, the next report required to issue is for the state auditor. Um, and that's on your state compliance, and we're, we're tasked at looking at specific things every year. So the state auditor will send out a new list every year and say, these are the things that are gonna be part of state compliance this year. Our op- we do give an opinion on your compliance, it's also an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. Um, the areas that we're required to look at is your budgetary compliance, your, your fund balance in the general fund. Uh, government fees, cash management, restricted taxes, fraud risk assessment, and the opening public meetings. So our opinion is very specific to those areas, that doesn't excuse you from having to obey the rest of you, the, the code, right? We, we still incorporate a lot of the compliance stuff into our testing, like the three-day deposit rule, you have to take the money to the bank within three days. That's not a part of state compliance anymore, but to me, that's the most relevant out of all the state compliance I've ever done in twenty years of doing this. Because it relates directly to the financial statements. So we, we do make sure that you're in compliance, uh, there, yeah, yep.
Did they ever decide, 'cause you can't go by the date on like a check, 'cause they could have mailed it? So you could be out of compliance. So is it just like at the point that the city receives it?
Yep.
Cause like our money flows through like the engineering and then I'll go to there, so once I receive it from there, then the three days.
Yeah, once, once the city receives it, so an internal control that you should have is that once you receive that, it should be stamped. The day, so if you get a receive stamp or if you have some signature or something that says, this is the date we received it. Then just within three days, business days, you have to take that to the bank. I would like to see it every day, but I understand, like, I live in the middle of nowhere and I don't go to the bank every day, so.
The way I do it is, once I go to the engineer to get the, like, the building permit, I mean, then I just go straight to the bank.
Yeah, so you can do it that way.
So that covers the, obviously covers the three-day problem.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as you grow, you're gonna wanna change because you going and picking up the money. And then you taking it straight to the bank is a horrible control. There's too many things that could happen from, or accusations that could happen from there to the bank. So really what should happen is, it should come into the city, somebody should receive that money. Somebody should record it in the financial records and prepare the deposit, somebody reviews that deposit, and then somebody else takes it to the bank. In a perfect world, but you're small, so you have to do what you have to do and just make sure that you, you mitigate that risk. So, as, as you grow, I mean, we, we can.
We have a lot of trust, Terry.
Yeah. I, I don't blame you, I'm not, I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying that I know things happen, so. We've, we've been there, done that.
Put an ESP category. I said, well, what's that for? I said, enter someplace. That's a balance.
All right, so that's, so that's everything that's really in the financial statements, and as you guys grow, there's obviously gonna be more. That gets incorporated into your financial statements. Um, right now, they're, they're pretty simple, you have a general fund and that's, that's about it, but as you get into the U R S and things like that, there's gonna be a lot more schedules and things into the financial statements. I mean, you're thirty pages long, I just reviewed financial statements that are two hundred and fifty pages long today, so it's, you know, you'll get there. Um, so things that I'm required to communicate to you, um, and I'll be quick. Cause you're probably getting bored now, um, the first section of the management letter just talks about our responsibilities. Um, the timing of the audit, when it's gonna be done, when we're gonna do field work. That's, is that my timer to say I'm done?
You're good, that's just.
Uh, that's all laid out in the engagement letter, that's why we have you sign an engagement letter. Um, compliance with ethics requirements and, and independence. Um, this is a communication to let you know that it's not your responsibility to make sure that we're independent of the city or of Dave. Um, that's my job as the partner to make sure that anybody on my staff or in my entire firm remains independent. So that we can be the auditors. Um, significant risks, so we talked about risk, so. In our management letter, we're now required to communicate to you the significant risks that we identified. But I have to explain these because I actually had somebody twist these words and sent a letter to the state auditor complaining about their financial clerk that. We were saying that their financial clerk basically was incapable of doing his job because of these risks. Um, so the risks are improper revenue recognition, cash disbursements, and then management's bias or the ability to override controls. Those three risks are significant risks in every engagement and every audit everywhere. If I do not identify those as significant risks, I do additional testing to say why they're not high-risk. And the reason why is because those are the three most high-fraud risk areas. Revenue recognition, um, you know, people manipulate revenue, especially in public companies or in government. The manipulation that I've seen is to stay within budget, so they'll move expenses from year to year or revenue from year to year. Um, they'll, you know, you, sometimes you'll have to, once you go out and bond, you have compliance issues, and if you. Go out of compliance, then they can call your bonds, so people will manipulate their revenue earnings so that they'll be in compliance, so. Um, that's a high-fraud area, cash disbursements, you're a government, everybody's concerned with how you're spending money, it's public money. So we design specific tests to test these areas to make sure that there's not any identifiable. Problems that we need to communicate to you, so we, we make sure that that risk is lowered down to a reasonable level to where we can feel comfortable with it and give an opinion. So really, all, all of the significant risks means is, we have to plan our procedures specifically around those risks. Before we issue an opinion, so nothing that the city did, nobody in the city, you know, did anything. To warrant these findings, these are just the risks that we had to identify as part of our audit. Um, because our audits are risk-based. All right, is that clear as mode? All right, accounting estimates, just remember there's always estimates in the financial statements, over time, those estimates can change, not a significant issue for the city at this point. Um, it will be more in the future as you acquire assets, um, as you participate in the U R S, things like that. When you have accounts receivable and you estimate how much you're not, you know, if, if you're gonna estimate a write-off, say, well, we think we're not gonna collect ten percent of this. That's an estimate, um, so we just look at your estimates and make sure that they're consistent over time. Uh, there weren't any difficulties encountered during the audit, there weren't any uncorrected misstatements. Um, I think we had one adjustment that we had Dave make. Management representation, so we had Terry sign a letter, basically it's a full disclosure letter. Um, like we ha- have you sign an engagement letter, uh, or we sign, yeah, we send you an engagement letter. We also have you give us a representation letter at the end. That really just states that any information that we asked, or if, if you know of anything that potentially could affect the financial statements. That you've been forthcoming with that information, you've just been open and transparent with this, basically. That's so when I'm reviewing my staff's work, I'm reviewing the financial statements, I'm reviewing our opinion. I can be comfortable with it, knowing that, okay, there's not anything lingering out there that we don't know about that potentially could change that opinion or make that. Opinion incorrect. All right. So last but not least, the findings for the year, there weren't any con- control findings and there weren't any state compliance findings, so. I guess if you consider that a pass on your first audit, then you passed your first audit. Really good to get to work with you guys, it's been good to work with Terry, um, I know my staff probably harassed him more than he wanted to be harassed. Um, it's good to have Dave, uh, Dave gives us a lot of the information so that it's a lot less stressful for, for you guys. And for, for the staff in the city. And, and you know, and like I said, let us be a resource, if you guys have questions, feel free to reach out to me, I'm, I'm always available and, and happy to talk. So I don't know if you guys have any questions.
See you next year.
Well, hopefully.
When does this audit report come out with all of the, uh, opinions and findings?
When is it gonna?
Yeah. Whoa, you're talking about all these risk-based things and we're doing things that are risky when we, when we find out.
Yeah, I mean.
Your biggest risk was having me as a treasurer.
That's one of the things that we look at, like, so we'll, we'll actually look at how things are being done. You're always gonna be doing things that, especially as a small city, and we deal with a lot of small cities. Um, especially when we're looking at controls, so we'll probably usually have conversations. Um, probably more so this year where you have, where you'll have a full year's of operations and so we can get to see really what your processes are. Cause right now, you're really kinda just getting up and getting started. Um, having Dave involved actually mitigates a lot of risk off of you guys as far as the financial statements goes. Because he's reviewing a lot of what's going on, um, he's kind of that employee without being an employee, so there's that, kinda that separation. Um, so that alleviates a lot of the risk as far as the financial statements goes from you guys. Um, but as you grow, things are gonna change, you're gonna hire people, people are gonna change, um, and, and. We will typically monitor that and it's something that you really need to talk about as counsel on an ongoing basis is. You know, do we, is there risks that we need to identify and do we need to. Or are we, you know, okay with the risk, you know, sometimes you can't do anything about it, like being a small city, you really, you don't have separation of duties. So at some point, that's why we carry insurance, right, so at some point, we say. I'm willing to take the risk of getting behind the wheel and driving in a snowstorm like I did last night, leaving Twilla City, driving to Bird's Eye. It was awful, but that was a risk I was willing to take, knowing that somebody could run into me or I could run into somebody, so that's why you carry insurance, right? So, um, at some point, the risk is just, it is what it is, but you wanna kinda mitigate that risk as much as possible. Uh, and, and, and I would say, at some point during the year, when you get a little bit more stabilized, you, you kinda get some of the growing pains out of your hair. You know, let us come out and do some internal control training. I don't charge to do it, I just, because I want you guys to be educated. Um, I've done it, you know, we did it for Twilla County, we did it for Stansbury Park. Um, we've done a lot for Stansbury Park because they had some issues, um, in Stansbury Park, and so we've done a lot of trainings for the board. Um, and really it's just the very basics of understanding what internal controls are. I mean, locking your doors is a control that you need to put in place, and so, anyway. I guess that's a kind of a long answer to your question, but as far as state compliance findings go. You know, as, as long as you're being in compliance with the things that you need to be doing, I, I don't suspect that there's always, that, that there should ever be any issues. Are there state compliant, yeah, I have counties and cities that are very large that have four or five state complying. Compliance findings a year, every year, just cause there's things that do get overlooked. Um, my, my bigger concern would be if there's internal control findings. So if we find things that are intentionally skirting internal controls, or we see things that are not being done correctly. Or blatantly outside the lines, then that's where you would have an issue. So, and we can get pretty ugly, but hopefully not.
I can tell.
Uh, we're pretty easy on.
Appreciate you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Well, has it scared you sufficiently?
No.
It's your turn, Terry.
Okay.
Uh, this will be the, this will be the, um, treasury report.
First, wanna clear up something that. Was in yesterday's bulletin, that was attributed to me, it said that, uh. That law enforcement that we're interlocal with was gonna take half of the property tax, well. We know it's not half, it's just about all of it, so, uh. At the end of it, it's, the half comes into, will be about half of the amount of the money that was advanced just by the county. So I just wanted to straighten that out. Okay, and then also, I'll think about it, also had to, got a call, well, not a call, got an email. And our workers' compensation, you know, was, is coming due again, so then I had to, just like these guys fill out a bunch of paperwork. And put X's and stuff like that, so we'll be getting another bill down the road for that pretty quick. So here's what I did in checking since our last meeting, we, I did a deposited permits was like eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Fifty-three cents, we received seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents in interest. And we got on them, strike, fund transfers of sixty-five dollars for the business license. And then for checks, ten seventy-one through ten seventy-eight, here they go. Put you at the head of the list.
All right.
Larson and Company for the audit for twenty-two, ten thousand dollars. Hunter Hawks refund for their permit, six hundred dollars, I don't, I guess everybody's aware about that. They were charged when they didn't need to be charged, so we just gave them that money back. Clerk's salary, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and nine cents. John Bream's legal fee, five thousand dollars. DNS accounting, seven hundred and fifty dollars. State of Utah permit fees for the business licenses, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. That was supposed to have been paid quarterly, so, but we missed, so I gave them the Dear John letter with the money and they cashed the checks. I'm assuming they accepted it, so this, this will be something we'll be paying every quarter, but it's only like point eight-five percent of one percent. Um, of the fees, the building permit fees only.
Building permit fees, okay, yeah.
Okay, and then for the city planner for, for Shell. One thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and for the Google account. Two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents for a total of nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. On credit cards for November, we had. A charge of eight dollars and eighty-two cents for the Microsoft monthly payment. And sixteen dollars and four cents for Adobe's monthly payment. And I paid those off on the twenty-sixth of November. But since then, for December, we got, uh, for ink cartridges for the printer stuff. It was one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And then again, eight dollars and eighty-two cents for Microsoft monthly, so we currently have a balance on the credit cards of. One thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents. So we currently have a balance on the credit cards of $1,776.10.
Did you say $1,700 for ink cartridge?
Yes. We got backups, we got to where we won't run out. So we got them on hand. And so when we reorder, we don't run out of the ink stuff.
Purchased two of every ink cartridge, so two black, two blue, yellow, and magenta. Cause the colors were out, so we needed to buy a color cartridge for each. And then a backup was also purchased for each one. Seven hundred and four eight ink cartridges, they're about $200 apiece.
I have a laser.
His laser.
Laser.
It's EastJet?
It's Toner.
Or it's, oh, okay.
It's Toner, sorry.
Not inkjet.
Color Toner. Sorry.
That's it.
Right, question for the treasurer. Moving on, council representative reports. Everybody have anything to report?
I got one thing, that disaster mitigation committee that we had had been doing, the contractors that the county had was like the Bear River or something or another. Apparently they no longer support that. So now they're, before we can get our final report or printout deal, they have to get another contractor. So that'll be on hold for a while.
Okay. Any others?
Uh, the county economic development committee, uh, had some grants. They had $200,000, they split it between three applicants. Uh, there's matching money involved. One of the applicants that received the money was the airport to do study for utilities and, and help them get utilities at the airport. So a third of that county money came into the city of Herta.
Great. Okay, general comments?
I got one, we, we need to find out who, I mean, I know we as a council don't wanna infringe on them, but they have like, like the parade and they have like the, a turkey truck I didn't know about. The wife went to it and stuff like that. So I think at the minimum, the city should be at least sponsors to where we can be a part of that and give them money if they need to or something. So we need to get ahold of whoever is over that some, how sometime and let them know we're here as an asset. Cause I know we set money aside for that purpose. So we just need to kinda let them be aware that we don't wanna change in year or be over and none of that type of stuff. But we are willing to help them out. The.
Are you talking about Herta Days?
Yeah, Herta Days, and like I said, there's a turkey trot thing too. There's probably several things I guess that they, they do throughout.
Private events happening in Herta. Uh, I think I'd be more comfortable with that budgeted money going towards a, an actual Herta City event rather than going to a private event.
Well, I don't know what private, it's the.
Herta Days is such an institution. It's, nobody really thinks of it as being private, but it is, it's a private thing, so.
Cause they do that turkey trot too, and that's like a run.
Yeah.
And they have sponsors and stuff like that.
I don't know how that works.
I was thinking we oughta do some of these hats Terry makes and do some fundraising or something with them. Cause these hats are awesome.
That's all we got.
Anything else? Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
Want to adjourn, do you?
I would like to, if, if there's nothing else.
Let's have a standoff, but let's see how long we can go till someone does it. All right, that was a motion.
Take it. Pull up the standoff?
Take a motion that we adjourned.
Who gets seconded and we adjourned? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting.
So you can notice the tiles gone off the floor?
Yeah, but only some of them.
Our last meeting.
Pipe, the ceiling broke.
Oh, that's what happened. Everything down here.
It gets all the hot air.
I guess.